Alright, everybody. We will call this meeting to order. Please rise for the pledge allegiance. Flag is that French.
Pledge allegiance to the flag, the United States of America, and to the Republic, which is changed, one nation, under God, indivisible, with liberty and justice for all.
We're at 2.0 agenda approval.
The most second.
All those in favor?
Aye.
Alright. We'll go to 3.0 visitors to address the board. This is a time for public comment on non-agenda items. The board will not take any immediate action, but we'll refer concerns to the superintendent and ask him to report to the board. We appreciate you keeping comments to three minutes per individual or five minutes if you were representing a group of patrons. This portion of the meeting will not exceed 60 minutes. I also have a set of prepared statements for this section. Public comments are allowed for any item posted on the board agenda and general comments on matters within the jurisdiction of the school district. We welcome your engagement and willingness to share your board, your views with board members. To address the board of directors, public comment cards should have been completed and submitted to Christie Ward, executive assistant to the superintendent and board, who's seated by the podium prior to the start of the meeting. You will take comments in the order the cards are received. Board policy BDDH, public comments in board meetings, requires that speakers to state their names, whether they are resident of the district and if speaking for an organization, the name of the organization. A spokesperson should be designated to represent a group with a common purpose. The public comment session will be open for one hour before we move into our regular business meeting. If there are additional speakers, we will also provide an opportunity for their remarks to be heard at the end of the business meeting before we adjourn. With an additional one hour to listen to public comments, typically the second public comment session is limited to agenda topics listed on the published agenda. We're waiving that requirement for tonight. Each speaker will be allowed up to three minutes for comment or five minutes if it is a group. Please be respectful of your time so that we can hear from as many speakers as possible. When you hear a sound, please wrap up your remarks. In the event that there are more speakers than time allotted, written comments can be submitted to the board at sb502@sthelens.k12.or.us. Please know that the board is listening, but the Oregon Public Meeting Law restricts what can be acted upon or discussed of those items properly noticed on the agenda. Public comment is not an interactive town hall or public forum. We are aware that there are several requests to comment on the current controversy about sexual abuse allegations in our district, the investigation into this terrible situation, and how our district has responded. We apologize for delays in initially providing timely updates and information to the public and the news media. The resignation of the former board chair and placement of our superintendent and high school principal and administrative lead left a tremendous gap in our small school district leadership team. We've taken steps to fill that gap and have begun regular outreach, engagement, and communication to our parents, staff, students, and community. I encourage you to visit our website at www.sthelens.k12.or.us and click on the responding to controversy button at the top of the page to find updates, FAQs, and notices on this issue. The district has also scheduled two listening sessions for next week on Tuesday, September, or December 17th for high school families and Wednesday, December 18th for middle school families. The December 17th meeting will be located at the St. Helens High School. The December 18th meeting will be held at St. Helens Middle School. Both meetings run from 6:00 to 7:30 p.m. The format for those sessions is to hear a 10-minute overview presentation by the acting superintendent on the issues. Then attendees will break into smaller study circles of eight to 10 people for a 60-minute roundtable discussion to ensure that everyone has an opportunity to share their thoughts, concerns, and suggestions. Additional listening sessions will be scheduled after the winter break for elementary families and Spanish-speaking families. These sessions will be facilitated by external trained facilitators. There will be recorders at each table to take notes. Facilitators will share with the whole audience the main points from each table for 20 minutes to close out the program. Lastly, please note that this is a business meeting of the school district. It is the expectation of the board that all persons attending accessibility and decorum. Please treat one another with respect during this meeting. The board will not tolerate any type of disruption to the business meeting. If there is disorderly conduct such as speaking out of turn, or clapping, booing, or shouts of approval or disagreement with someone's point of view, we will provide warnings. If those warnings are not heard, then we will have to adjourn with a recess and we will move to another room for a virtual meeting. Any person who interferes with the conduct of a board meeting by willfully interrupting or disrupting the meeting is subject to be asked to leave. If necessary, the board may take a recess, relocate to an alternative location, and conduct its regular business meeting in that new location excluding the public when the time is appropriate. With all of that said, let's open public comment with our first speaker. So far, I have one public comment card. Is there anybody else that wishes to speak? Please preside to the public comment. Our first comment is from Patrick Burkle. The listed items on the card are costs incurred by district to address present situation, questions about board meetings and decisions, questions about mandatory staff training regarding mandatory reporting. Mr. Burkle. Berkeley, my apologies. I have been mispronouncing your name for years. My apologies.
No, everybody.
I get that.
That's it. Yes, Patrick Berkeley, I am the current employee at the district that teaches third grade at the elementary school, but I am here tonight speaking as the citizen, resident, taxpayer, and someone who's had a 30-year connection with the school district one way or the other. So the question I could have.
Thank you. Alright. So the, yes, three things. One, it has to do with the costs and to make sure that the public is fully aware of all the costs involved. I know that the salaries being paid to the acting administrative superintendent and high school principal are public. And on the FAQ section, section, it says that those are the two employees that we've hired, but there are additional costs. The now-deposed or the communications director who stepped down, obvious, going to be obvious costs with the people who are involved in facilitating these meetings, all very important things. But I think those costs need to be made clear. What is it costing the district? And also clear, since a budget is a limited amount of money, where is that money coming from? Is there going to be an impact, budgetary impact, on any other things, personnel, supplies, maintenance, that type of thing, I think needs to be made very clear. The second thing is brought to my attention at a, in an article by Spotlight. Questions about the process followed for the hiring of the acting superintendent. According to Oregon statutes, deliberate meetings need to be publicly announced, and there cannot be talking amongst or decision-making amongst board members in a, like a serial fashion. So for instance, from a slideshow by Shannon Fallon, who was, is, or was the Assistant Attorney General for the Oregon Department of Justice. A series of private communications amongst board members, is it, it is recommended that board members not read in private to discuss business or exchange private communications business, even if those involved, those involved constitute less than a quorum. So I think it would be imperative that you assure the public that you follow the, the proper process to make this decision. I'm not questioning the who you hired, but the process. Did you follow those laws? The third thing is, and I am, I guess, speaking also as an employee, that we were, as employee certified and licensed staff are required to attend trainings and meetings, including a half-hour video, and that's my three minutes, but if you'll, I'll finish up. And then a presentation by Otis and TSPC. I want to be assured that also you as mandatory reporters by law, that you have received and are receiving the same training, the same amount that you are requiring of your employees, and that same training be required of every single person who has an administrative or, you know, other role in the, in the district. Thank you.
Thank you. Next, we have Abigail Christner. On behalf of another. Or is that Ashley? Ms. Christner? Ashley? The topic's on behalf of another.
I am Ashley Christner. I am a resident of St. Helens. I have two students in the high school. I'm glad to have an opportunity to speak to you tonight, and while I have plenty to say myself, I feel like it's more important that I share a letter on behalf of another parent who has effectively been silenced by the district. And that.
And what?
I'm not going to repeat that.
Okay.
Hello. Thank you for hearing from me today. I have a few questions. How are you paying for the extra individuals brought in to assist our district? How long are their contracts? Northwest Regional Educational Service District is an agency of St. Helens School District, essentially employees whom in the past provided substitutes and IAs. Financially, the ESD is partially funded through contracts they hold with the district. They have a relationship with the district that benefits them. How are they able to provide non-biased services to the district? Why have you hired admin or former superintendents to do the investigations that are not truly third parties, since they are found and employed through the Northwest Regional Educational Service District? Why have you not employed true detectives? Who made the decision on hiring all outside individuals, and why were they not brought to the community for transparency before the decision was made? Please explain how Mr. DeLapp was vetted, whom he resigned yesterday after the community found felony embezzlement charges out of California. Are you pulling national background reports or just state? Please explain the process in detail. Placing responsibility on a secondary sourcing like the ESD is not an option. Were you given more than one name to choose from for this position, and if so, who made the deciding factor? If you relied on the SD, why did you not do diligence before blindly stepping in and hiring him? Do you see how you're hiring somebody with a history of embezzlement makes things look worse, and the community loses further trust in your ability to make decisions? Especially when there are large discrepancies in the district's financials? How will you prevent this from happening in the future? In what ways are you supporting and working with detectives, Otis, TSPC, within the schools? How are you protecting teachers, including substitutes, who come forward or want to come forward to Otis, TSPC, the detectives, in public forums like board meetings without retribution? Which includes bullying, being let go from your job, or pulling them into the principal's office with the secretary present, who takes notes while they claim parents are calling in concerned about them working with their children after they spoke out against abuse? At the last board meeting, at the last board meeting, and whose daughter received a standing ovation by many of said parents? What steps are you taking to ensure that these things will not and are not going to continue to happen? In detail, how are you currently addressing bullies in the schools? How are you supporting those bullied in bathrooms? How many teachers are currently on leave or under investigation from all investigative parties? Who and how many are under investigation for financial crimes? Please explain in detail why a 346.28 staff count, sorry, I'm new to this, in fiscal data, including her pupil count used in table from 2021 to 2022, do not line up with the 78,000 and 300,000 spent on fingerprinting? We could have fingerprinted the entire community with that amount. Do you charge incoming staff for their fingerprinting? Concerning the consent agenda, please go into as much detail as possible with the explanation for how the board voted and why. She outlines the consent agenda. So again, those were the questions posed by another parent in the community, somebody who feels that her voice has been silenced. Her life has been turned upside down by the actions of the district and the board. And she's been completely alienated. Her child is a victim. Thank you.
Thank you. Our next comment is from Gina regarding Tom DeLapp and Steve Webb.
Good evening, everybody. My name is Gina Stotts. I'm a resident of St. Helens. My daughter did previously go to the high school and transferred to CCEC, now Plymouth High School. My question is, why didn't you do a background on DeLapp to find this information? Why did it take somebody like me, a really nobody, who doesn't get out there and do all this stuff and protest, but now I am, I had to do the background check. You should be doing your diligence on every student and, or every teacher that comes to this school and teaches around these children that you are supposed to be protecting. How do you not do your due diligence? I mean, I'm a nobody, and I can do this information and find this information out on my own, and I've done one on every one of you members, including the CFO. How can she be a CFO when she's got tax issues of her own? How do we trust her with the financial issues?
We're not talking about people's.
And then Mr. DeLapp, how can we trust your expertise? We know you have expertise. We get that. We want somebody with expertise, but how can we trust you? When you, during your tenure, you had issues in the Vancouver School, public schools, violating state law. How can we trust you to do what's right for this school district? When you didn't do it right for Vancouver?
Betty Bundy and is it IDD Advisory Council? Council Outreach? If I missed that, please consider. My handwriting is atrocious, so that's fine. So is this then on behalf of a group?
Hi, yes.
Okay, thank you.
My name is Betty Bundy, and I am the director for Advocate Access Northwest. I'm going to let my friends introduce themselves.
Did you say you were co-chairman of the CTE Advisory Committee?
We could probably pass the microphone around. Do you think we can open? Thank you, guys.
Yeah, I'm Jacob Sandin, and I went to all of the St. Helens schools and yeah.
My name's Jenny Fields. I'm a parent of kids in every school in this school district, and I'm also a member of the Intellectual and Developmental Disabilities Council.
Alright, so we gathered here today and just wanted to talk to the board representing the Columbia County Intellectual and Developmental Disabilities Advisory Council. This council was formed in March of 2024 and consists of individuals who experience a disability, family members, and professionals. We are a dedicated group committed to seeing positive change in special education programs and are ready to help make that happen. It's important to remember that any of us or our children could experience a disability at any moment due to illness or an accident. At any point, we could lose our ability to speak or complete our daily routines independently. This reality underscores the importance of the robust and supportive educational system for all students. Please remember this as you consider our request. Right now, many parents find it challenging to send their children to school due to the loss of trust. Imagine how much harder it is for those parents who have children who cannot verbally express when something is wrong. These parents live with a constant fear that their child's needs are not being met, and those voices are not being heard. The IDG Advisory Council is eager to collaborate with each district in Columbia County to support teachers, administrative employees, and students. We believe that having the opportunity and partnership with the IDD program to be part of facilitating, working, sorry, with faculty and staff meetings would be a greatly, great benefit to the students and their support systems. We're asking this as this collaboration would provide teachers with the tools and knowledge they need to support students with disabilities effectively. Many teachers have approached the council, asking for training on how to best support students who do need accommodations. These teachers want to empower their students and help them succeed in their educational goals. Additionally, many children in special education cannot verbally communicate their needs, as stated before, and adding an additional layer of fear to those parents. By working together, we can alleviate some of these fears and create a more inclusive and supportive environment for all students. Our only request is to open up, have an open discussion on how St. Helens School District, the IDG Advisory Council, and the IDD program can collaborate to benefit students with disabilities. The council intends to make another attempt to open this discussion directly with the school employees, but we would really appreciate the support of the board moving forward. The council has agreed that we stand with the students of St. Helens, and we hope the board and community will continue, continue to commit to standing by all students. Thank you.
Laura Moore, Protecting Student Safety and Addressing Concerns. Ask the board how you are protecting, I'm assuming this is the statement you wish to make.
Hi, I'm Laura Moore. I'm a parent to three high schoolers, a middle schooler, and a preschooler. I come to you today as a parent. Going to read to you what I wrote. Good evening. I'm here today as a concerned parent to ask the board how you are protecting our children under this current circumstances. First, I want to address the situation involving Eric Sterns, who is facing multiple charges, including sexual assault and misdemeanors. Despite these serious allegations, Sterns' victims, including my children, are expected to continue attending school in the same environment where his office is located. To make matters worse, the school is referring to his room, which includes his office as their safe room or safe space. How can a safe space connected to Sterns be considered safe for victims? And how does this ensure their safety and emotional well-being? Second, I want to bring to your attentions incidents reported by my daughters. On two separate occasions last Friday and this Monday, while my daughters and other girls were changing in the girls' locker room for wrestling, male adults and students entered the girls' locker room. These incidents occurred while the girls were undressing. Despite the seriousness of these violations, no calls were made to families of the students who reported these offenses. How is the school addressing since blatant breaches of student safety and privacy? Students, especially Sterns' victims, are protected from such invasion of their privacy? Are they? As a parent and deeply troubled by the lack of proactive measures, communication, and accountability in these situations, referring to a room tied to an individual under investigation as a safe space is unacceptable and is re-traumatizing for his victims. Furthermore, allowing incidences like these in the locker room to occur without immediate action sends a message that student safety and well-being are not a priority. I urge the board to take immediate action, meaningful action, to address these issues, to ensure the physical and emotional safety of all students, and to communicate transparently with families and how much concerns will be resolved moving forward. Thank you.
Venturing Dorn, Allison Doop, you never say her name right, and hiring criminals and known abusers.
Hi. I started doing research too on individuals. I started with my son's school, decided to start at the top with the principal, Allison Dubuque. First thing that pops up is a lawsuit back in 2018. Batista versus the Beaverton School District. Allison Dubuque was the principal or assistant principal at the time. She was involved in a lawsuit because they were not protecting the students from bowling. It became severe, so severe that the student and hit their parents filed a lawsuit, $400,000. Nothing came of the lawsuit, and nothing happened to anybody at that school. Nobody was reprimanded. Nothing was reported. Everything went on like normal. And then who do we hire for McBride Elementary? Allison Dubuque. Why? Why did she come to St. Helens? Why did she leave a high school? I, I'm under the impression that people work their way up. Elementary school is kind of like the bottom. I could be wrong. I don't know. Robert Fink was an amazing principal. Absolutely loved him. Allison Dubuque, absolute joke. I don't know. If you guys are aware, there's all kinds of bowling going down at McBride, and nothing is being done. My son was being bullied. I finally had to march him to that office and tell them I was done. That child lays one more hand on my kid. That's it. And then something was done. But that child still continues to hit, punch, push, and get away with whatever they want. And it happens a lot. It's happening rampant. What I want to know is why are we becoming known as the place that hires pedophiles? If a teacher has a sexual assault history in their past, we don't seem to be aware of this. Do districts not talk to districts? Do you guys not look up disciplinary actions, reparations? Do you not Google your employees? I'm seriously confused because you're pushing out good teachers like Miss Sherri Lee at the special ed program at McBride Life Skills Classroom. It was absolutely amazing. You have teachers and students and community members crying for her to come back because Allison Dubuque has completely shredded the special ed program. It is a glorified daycare, and they're not even getting that right. Children are being neglected, sent home in dirty diapers, and she does not care. She's getting rid of the good aides, anyone who stood by Miss Sherri's side. She rearranged their classrooms, took away their work tubs, took away their schedules. They have no structure. They're getting around the building and running without any supervision. They're outside of the building running around, and one was brought back by a neighbor who got loose in the neighborhood. This is special needs children who cannot advocate for themselves. We don't know what happens to them. We rely on adults reporting to us. My daughter was in Miss Sherri's classroom for four years, and Miss Sherri Lee changed her life. And absolutely loves my daughter and my family, and we love her. This is unacceptable. This is an elementary school. Allison Dubuque needs to go immediately. It's coming out. Nobody likes her. Nobody wants her there. She's a real problem. Can you guys do the right thing? Stop employing people who are dangerous to our children, people who do not report abuse. Allison Dubuque does not report abuse. She does not report bowling. She does not report neglect. Get it together. What you're doing doesn't work. You've got to change everything. There's no accountability, no check and balance, and we've had it. We're not dumb. And we're super upset about the PR situation. Wow. We are not dumb. It was really easy to find dirt on him, real easy, and a lot of it. So much so, he resigned. Real easy and a lot of it, so much so, he resigned. You've got to get it together.
That's it, okay. We'll move to four point oh consent agenda. The board on an individual basis prior to the meeting has reviewed all material. All financial reports are available for review by the public and the business office. The board considers consent agenda items routine business and will be enacted by the board in one motion. There will be no discussion of these items at the time the board votes on the motion, unless members of the board, staff, or public request specific items to be discussed and/or removed from the consent agenda. While I understand that there was a comment related to that, there was no specificity to that. So, I'll move for the consent agenda to be approved.
We accept the consent agenda stated. I will second.
Okay, it's been moved and seconded. Does anybody have any comments? All those in favor, say aye. It's been moved, seconded, and approved. Number five point oh discussion, five point one board vacancy appointment process. So we have a open position on the board. We have a policy on the open position of the boards. So it is policy BBE. And vacancies will be filled through board appointment. The board appointee must be a legally registered voter and a resident within the district for one year immediately preceding the appointment. In the event of multiple vacancies, the position vacated first will be filled first. Upon appointment by the board, the newly appointed board members will be sworn and seated immediately. If the offices of a majority of board members are vacant at the same time, the directors of the Northwest Education Service District shall appoint persons to fill the vacancies from qualified district voters. Board elections are held every odd numbered year, which for the purposes of this policy are termed election years. The appointee will serve until June thirtieth following the next election, at which time the individual elected in May of that year will fill the remaining portion of an unexpired term or serve a full four-year term or serve until June thirtieth of the subsequent election year if the vacancy occurs after the filing date in an election year. A board member so elected as a replacement will serve the remaining years of the term of office of the board member being replaced. That's the policy. The ORS three four one point three three five on vacancy says that the board shall declare the office of a board member vacant if it finds any of the following. The incumbent has died or resigned, the incumbent has been removed or recalled from office, or the election of the incumbent thereto has been declared void by the judgment of a court. The incumbent has ceased to be a resident of the district from which the incumbent was nominated or elected. The incumbent has ceased to discharge the duties of office for two consecutive months unless prevented therefore by sickness or other unavoidable cause or unless excused by the chairperson of the board. A board member who is nominated or elected by zone and who changes permanent residence from one zone of a district to another zone or who may, by a change in zone boundaries, no longer reside in the zone of nomination or election is entitled to continue to serve as board member until June thirtieth. Following the next regular district election, at which a successor will, shall be elected by the electors to serve for the remaining of the unexpired term. When a vacancy is declared under subsection one of this section, the remaining board members shall meet and appoint a person to fill the vacancy from any of the electors of the district if the position is filled, is one filled by both nomination and election at large, and otherwise from any of the electors of the zone from which the vacancy occurs. So filling a vacant board position. There are different upper, different options that we have to be able to follow through with this. Selecting candidates. The law contains no guideline for selecting potential candidates to fill a vacant board position. The statutes do provide qualifications, however. Applicants for vacant positions must be registered voters and residents of the district for one year immediately prior to the appointment. Many college board members are exempt from the one-year residency. Citizens who meet these residency requirements in their district prior to its merger with another district are eligible to serve on the board or budget committee of the merged district. Oregon districts commonly use the following three methods to fill vacancies. The board encourages citizens who live in the district to give their names to the chief executive officer within a specified period. The board then screens all of the applicants and makes selections of suitable candidates. If the board interviews candidates, it must do so in public meetings. The board may appoint a committee to select and submit two or three names to the board for final action. The board should receive a list of all candidates from which the community made its final selection. If a local advisory committee already exists, the board may instruct it to carry on a screening process. If these methods are not satisfactory to a board, it may develop its own selection process. Electing replacements. The board must make its final selection of a replacement in a public meeting, recording in the minutes how each member voted. Term of office for replacement. The person who fills a vacancy serves until June thirtieth following the next regular district election, which takes place in May of odd numbered years. That election individual is elected to serve either the unexpired portion of the four-year term or a new four-year term. There's a selection of interview questions that are on here that the board would select to be able to ask that we can use. And then I can go to the rest of that. Yes, filling a vacant board position requires a public discussion as directed by ORS one nine two point six six zero. The question for this may answer some. Our board will be interviewing three candidates to fill one vacant position on our board due to a resignation. While all interview conversations must be completed in public, it is difficult to talk about the applicants in public. Do you have any advice for a school board as it launches into this very public process? So yes, filling a board position requires a public discussion as directed by ORS one nine two point six six zero. And yes, this can be a difficult discussion. While not required, we recommend that the board adopt a if you can't say anything nice, don't say anything agreement in order to avoid public embarrassment. With this practice, each current board member speaks in favor of their preferred candidates. By their silence, they indicate who they do not support. As each board member takes a turn to comment, you are able to tell where things are headed. Additional comment rounds are made if necessary to narrow the field. In every case, the focus is on the positive points about the candidates. So provide some process as far as how the board will do that. So that is the process of noticing the vacancy and then moving forward. We've had, I think, three of these in the last ten years that I can recall. We've had a fairly prescribed process that we've used over the course of time. We have guidance from the states. So at this point, we have a couple of different options that we can do. How's the board feel?
I'm open. I'm, I just think that we should move quickly to get someone on the board.
I, I think somewhere in our notes there was a some deadlines and the timeline set out for applicants to fill out an application and I, I think that's a reasonable process, but first thing we need to do is declare a board vacancy. And I, I, even though there is one, I, I think that there's actually a motion in our notes to declare a board vacancy. And once we declare it, then we set up the process, but I think the application process, so that people that are interested, or maybe folks here that are interested, that then they can fill out the application and get all their information in so that then we can make a each review their information and then have a public discussion. Whether we use a committee or how you do it, that's up to you. But I think that we need to move ahead and I think that our timeline was to have that done by what first meeting in January would be there.
So the proposed timeline is tonight, board discussion on appointment process. December twelfth, application posted and announced. December twenty third, the application window closes, giving approximately two weeks. December thirtieth through January sixth will be the review and screening of applicants. And then on January eighth, applicants are invited for interviews, board interview and appointment action in open session. So the plan is to, at the next regularly scheduled meeting on January eighth, conduct and complete the interviews and then appoint.
So since they didn't really hear, what was your timeline on applicants open after declaration? And when is the deadline to turn in an application?
So tonight's the discussion. December twelfth, application is actually posted and announced. December twenty third, the application window closes. And then December thirtieth through January sixth would be the review and screening of the applicants. January eighth would be when we would conduct the interview, so.
By January, by December twenty third, then they would have to have an application.
As far as emailing it or?
Yeah, we should be able to accommodate hard copy and electronic copy submission.
Are, are fingerprints required as their school board, a school volunteer? Do we have background checks and fingerprinting?
We do.
So that would happen after they apply? That then they would do that or does that, they don't have to do that before they apply, but between the twenty third and the eighth and somewhere those folks that
Typically before they're sworn in.
Yeah, okay.
I, just a matter of, of process. I, I do advise the board entertaining a motion to declare the vacancy.
Yes, that's, that was my So I move we declare vacancy.
Well, let's finish this.
Is there actually a position number on that?
It is. It's position three.
Position, okay, so I move we declare position three vacant.
I think Trent wanted to carry on the discussion first.
Well, we'll finish the discussion and then we'll move to action items and yeah, we'll amend it at that. Can, can we get double confirmation on the background and the fingerprinting? As it's an elective position, typically those are not gone through at the time of election. But if it's an appointment, then does that change the process? I'll get back to you. Thank you. Any other questions or comments on where we're at with the board position?
I think it just depends on how many applicants we get, if we want to pre-screen and run them through a committee or any process so that we can bring however many you want to the board.
I would recommend that we create a subcommittee and that we invite at least one potential member of the community, likely someone that's already in an elected position or something of that, at least invite it so that there's a third party that's outside of us that's screening the applicants and providing then their list of what'd we say, three to interview?
I think that's typical. I, it's a, I think we can do what we like if we want to have more or less.
Right. Do we have a number that we would prefer to interview on that night?
We believe the last time we had five. Matter of fact, I think a couple of times I've had it where we had five. Whether we get that many or not.
So historically, we've gone at least five.
I think so.
I think that's
Five have ran through the public meeting process.
Okay. Any other thoughts on the process?
Yeah, we'll post it on the landing page of the district webpage. So we'll make that readily accessible and visible.
Would, would it be inappropriate to put that out also in Parents Square?
I'm sorry.
Would it not, would it not be appropriate to not only put it on the district webpage, but maybe at least the notice on Parents Square so people
We can certainly communicate that more broadly.
I mean, that's our more engaged community, so.
Any further discussion? Before we get to the second portion of our comments, I will entertain a motion to amend the agenda.
Make a motion to amend the agenda to add vacancy announcement for a school board.
So first we complete the motion to amend, then we amend.
Yeah, I'll move to, I'll second the amendment.
Okay, motion has been moved and seconded. All those in favor of amending the agenda, say aye. All right, now that we've made that motion and completed that, I'll entertain a motion to add action item one point zero, declare vacancy position three school board.
So move.
I'll second.
Been moved and seconded to add action item one point oh on, I think it would actually be seven. So we'll move seven down to eight. All those in favor?
Now I move to declare vacancy position number three.
I'll second.
Mood and segment to declare position number three. All those in favor?
Aye.
Okay, that part of the business is done. I have one comment card. Oh, is there another one? So we'll move to six point oh visitors to address the boards. As we stated at the beginning, typically this is the time for comment, comment on agenda items. However, we will waive that for today. The board will not take any immediate action, but will refer to concerns to the superintendent and ask him to report to the board. We appreciate you keeping comments to three minutes per individual or five minutes if you're representing a group of patrons. This portion of the meeting will not exceed sixteen minutes. The first one off is Sarah Young. Regarding supposed new board members.
Hi, my name is Sarah Young. I live in Scopus, but I have a student who transferred from the high school there to St. Helens because of bullying. And after he transferred, he was victimized this school year by a teacher. Can you clarify, please, the process on how a new board member will be picked? Are you forming a committee amongst yourselves to pick the new board member?
This isn't an open forum, ma'am, so we're listening to comments.
Okay.
Yes, we, we will clarify that.
Thank you. I appreciate that. Do you realize that the community has lost faith in your ability to do your job? And the idea of you rushing to pick a new board member is highly, highly concerning. We have questions about numerous ethical issues, possible investigations to discuss financial crimes and why there are huge discrepancies in the budget and where money's gone. You guys apparently that's, I could go on, but I'm not going to. You need to resign.
Next comment is from Stephanie Kroll. Apologies.
Okay, so I'm a mom. I'm a mom to a high school student and I've been fighting the school district for years for my son and been voiceless. My kid was here bullied over and over. I showed videos of him coming home, wounds, injuries. Nothing was ever done. Nobody advocated my voice. Nobody heard my voice. Okay, that's mom. I tell my son, when he's done something wrong, you need to apologize for it. I want to know where your guys' apology is. You know, I want to know to the students where your apology is for allowing what has happened. When do you guys stand up? I mean, you're adults. You should know how to apologize and actually say to the students, hey, we messed up and this is what we're going to do to fix it and this is what we did wrong. How are our kids going to learn from making mistakes if you aren't setting the example? That's what we do at home with our kids, right? Why aren't you guys coming forward and apologizing to the community, to the parents that you have literally failed by subjecting our kids to all this terrible stuff, this bullying that I've been fighting for for years? That literally just makes me so infuriating. That literally just makes me so infuriating because. It's been going on for so long. And through all of this, I have yet to hear an actual sincere apology from any of you. In any way, addressing the children, creating an assembly to call upon the kids to say, hey. We are so sorry this happened to you and that you guys are scared and you don't feel safe. Where's the apology to the parents that we? I love my child, I would never put him in harm. Okay, and then when I put my kid on that school bus every morning, I am entrusting you with my most precious thing in this whole entire world. Having faith that you guys are going to keep him safe, that he isn't going to come home with wounds. Mental wounds, physical wounds. Screwing up my kid. Where's those apologies? Why? Why haven't none of you, how, why haven't you apologized to the kids? Why haven't you addressed the kids? Why haven't you addressed the parents? Hey, we're sorry. It makes you all look. Guilty, 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 guilty all across the board because now nobody's owning it. Like literally, so Scott, Scott Wells not here anymore. Scott, well, guess what? He's not the only one on the board. So you know what? You guys staying silent makes you look just as bad as him. Okay, and without those freaking apologies, basically, it makes you look just as bad as him and Wagner. Literally, it looks, makes it look just as bad as the principal of this. Freaking school, okay, because. I came, I talked to the vice principal, the principal, counselors, I was on the phone every week, I was in this school almost every week fighting for my kid, nobody. They didn't even record. The reports that I put in, when I saw my kids fight. Uh, file, it was empty. And it wasn't until I came to the school and talked to the principal, I said, you know what, if you're not going to protect my kid? I taught my kid, his hands are for love and to do amazing things. They're not to hurt, but if they're not going to protect you. Then you're going to have to protect yourself. I said, another kid touches you, you defend yourself and I promise you, you won't be in trouble, okay? That very next week, I came in here, talked to the principal, I told them what I gave my kid permission to do. My kid ended up. Punching a kid for being bullied. And I got called in here, got to watch the video. I was so proud of my kid for standing up for himself for the first time, he felt vindicated. And we took that suspension and I took him out to dinner. Okay, when I looked at that file, I said, where's the timeline? I've been fighting you guys for years to do something, to do something for my kid, nothing was in that. File up until. Time my kid assaulted another kid. You don't get to pick and choose what you document. Everything should be documented and when do you guys take responsibility with all these kids with mental illness, drug issues, suicide? Bringing guns to school, when do you guys take resp- any responsibility for that? Because it's not like they woke up just one second day and decided that they were going to do those things, okay? There was a whole timeline that came before that, all the mental health that I put my kid through, counseling. Everything to get my kid to where he is today, that was all me, you guys. Pimped me every way, all the way down the road, but I still made sure my kids didn't see that despite all of you. Okay, and I want you guys to apologize. I want you guys to. Stand up and do what we expect our children to do and own something. Own something about this because all you're doing is making yourself look just bad as the ones that aren't sitting up there anymore. And it's not okay, it's not okay, and I, I, I'm so sick to my stomach over all of this. Finally, my kid isn't in that place anymore, but I'm standing coming up here right now so that the future moms and the children that get bullied. And their moms are worried about their kid and where they're going to end up. They don't have to go through that, you guys need to, you need to document these, you need to give a shit. You need to care, you need to take accountability and actually address these things and protect our kids. These are our babies. And I trust that you guys with my kid and you failed him over and over again. And stop failing them, stop failing, we depend on you guys. We pay your, pay your wages to protect our kids. This should have never happened, it just shows complete incompetency.
You know, stocks, TikToker Doug Weaver.
So for talking about apologies here, I think each and every one of you. Oh, a huge apology to Doug Weaver. Had it not been for him and his TikToks, none of us would have known about this, none of us. Yes, and especially you, Kelly.
This will be the first warning.
Yeah, especially you, I have screenshots of your gaslighting him. On Facebook, how shameful of you to gaslight this man for bringing this to our attention. Yeah, he doesn't have a mental illness. You guys don't even know what a mental illness is, do you? Cause I'm looking at it right now.
That concludes the public commenting. Section. So Dr. Webb, as I've taken notes, some of the things I'd like to. Okay. Yes. Kelly Smith, parent comment.
Thank you, Kelly J Smith, uh, Columbia County resident, parent of many students within the district as well. Um, over the many years that I have been a volunteer in this district, I feel that I've always spoken up and advocated with a child-first mindset. I'd like to acknowledge that the board, as the board, you do provide oversight and you are not in the weeds, it is your job. Not your job, nor is it allowed for you to make the day-to-day operating decisions. But as a board, you can make pretty fast changes around the district's goals, priorities, budget and policy. And as a parent, I'd like to share that my family's experiences echo the same shared messages with the many others here. The concern for compassion and care. That it is needed throughout our schools. And during our strategic planning, I was the parent that added compassion to our weightfinding messaging. Through our many experiences as a family, I can share several examples that have happened just this calendar year. For example, I have referred to our high school as feeling like a prison or jail, and I have expressed that it made me sick to my stomach to be in that environment. I have stated that I felt that for the most part, that the school could take care of my students physically, but that they did not, that I did not trust their environment emotionally whatsoever. I have also countered through the correspondence that I felt like high school administration was dismissive. As often, I was frustrated and I did not feel listened to. I have advocated for a structural study of the high school and I can be quoted for referring to our high school as sucky. Which I was a little embarrassed to express, even though it was true. Then this week, while I was at in a, a state leadership conference, leaders talked, leaders from across state talked about sucky schools. Not by name, of course, but it gave some validation that communities across the state are experiencing the same issues within their schools. We have a, as a state, we have been challenged with major workforce shortages, extreme student behaviors. And increased liabilities, regulations and requirements within our districts. We must have the parent partnership, that also means that we as parents must be willing to volunteer and engage. So while this situation is heartbreaking, I really do not feel upset that we are here. I'm looking forward to the changes and I can agree the more change is needed. It's refreshing. And as I have done before, I am advocating again for us to carefully consider other options for our high school. We do have many caring and present teachers, we have wonderful resilient students. And we do have a lot of great things happening within our district, but we also have this moment. We have a moment where we can take a pause and consider what we want to do next. I don't want to put all the pieces back together the way what they were before. As a parent, I want us as a school community to completely reimagine our school, whatever they may be, whatever it may be. And I know your hearts. And I know your intentions, your dedication, and I'd like to ask that the board and the community demonstrate our will together.
Thank you. Okay, so that will now conclude our public comments. Dr. Webb, um, there's one thing that uh. Through the course of both comments and some of the experiences that I've had, that I would like to have a report back. So Policy KL is the official pathway for complaints to the board. I would like to know how we're messaging that to parents. So that when they have concerns relative to decisions that are made at the building level and at the superintendent level. Whether they're given the correct instructions and support needed to be able to appropriately address the board to make a decision on anything related to those decisions. There were a few other notes related to this uh that I believe. We either have in our um response page. Uh, but is there anything else out of the notes that you feel we missed or that wouldn't be addressed through that?
We've got a couple of parents that like to connect with here. At some point in the near term.
Okay.
Yeah.
The other component is um typically, we don't allow personnel discussions inside of these meetings. Just for informational purposes, if you have concerns about any personnel matters. Please go to your buildings. If you are not getting listened to there, please go to the superintendent. If you are not getting there, please utilize Policy KL, which allows for us to take official action. And that's now in the future and any retroactive concerns that you may have. So please go to the superintendent and address anything in that area.
Yes.
Okay, we will move to seven point O, which is now action item, declare vacancy for the board, one point O, position three, declare vacancy. Well, entertain a motion to declare.
So move.
I'll second.
It's been moved and seconded, discussion. All in favor, say aye.
Aye.
Aye. And we will move to seven point O upcoming meeting inputs, which is the January 8th, twenty twenty four Boardwork Session.
I wanted to make a note on the uh public forums that we're doing where parents can talk. Can we post that as a public meeting as well uh so that we can all attend if we like? So possible quorum at the meetings, is that okay? Thank you.
For these listening sessions, was the plan to have those facilitations be. Essentially with the superintendent and the facilitators and the board not present for those particular.
The, the initial plan was for uh the superintendent and the external facilitators to engage in those conversations with patrons, with parents. With students in attendance, if it's the board's interest to also be in attendance, we can certainly agendize that publicly and notice it.
Or if we're clearly uh going with the. Mentality that it's only the high school parents that show up and only the middle school parents show up, I mean. Is that what you want us to do? Because I feel like I can attend two of them, Trent can attend one, they have grand, we have grandparent duties over here, but they could probably show up at elementary. If you want to do it that way.
We have two listening sessions scheduled for next week, the seventeenth is for high school families. The eighteenth is for middle school families. We're working on scheduling two additional uh. School-based listening sessions after the winter break. Uh, that will likely occur in the first week, possibly the second week of January, those will be elementary level. Uh, listening sessions. We are also scheduling one Spanish-speaking listening session. Early in January as well.
The last time we did that, it was very well attended.
It was, it was very nice.
So I'm looking for direction here.
I know, it won't be noticed.
Okay.
Any other input?
I, I do have a question, if we were to get more than the five applications, um. Do we, do we invite everybody at night or do we need to meet ahead of time when we then reduce it to the five power?
So there can be a subcommittee created through the superintendent to be able to. Invite possibly that third party. And then one board member can review, um, so those things can be figured out for the screen purposes. And then uh, once the candidates are presented as meeting qualifications and all of those other things, um. We, we have said five is our number. So if there's more than five applicants, then that screening committee would uh then engage to reduce that to five. Based on whatever criteria um. Is used. As far as that goes.
Okay, so um, maybe what we can do is because there's Christmas break prior, there's only the two days, is at least a note. That um, we have the applications and more than that amount is that on the seventh, um, six or seven. It's going to have to be that meeting between the different people that Trent suggested to put together and have those applications ready.
So the subcommittee can uh interview those and score them individually, they don't have to communicate. And then it would be a scoring criterion based on whatever rubric is used. And then they don't have to communicate, they just go through the scoring and then subjective on scoring.
I just want to make sure we're kind of clear on the dates when even that part would um occur.
Got it.
Okay. Any other input? And this meeting is adjourned. Thank you, everybody.
Got some. Big questions, actually.